You want to, but then they won't, you won't have the... I mean, push it in. Instead of being on this screen, it'll be on that screen.
Is there anybody on this?
Oh, I mean, can I get...
Maybe, maybe.
Sure, everybody turn on their little... I feel like I'm in an iPhone. floating around. A recap of a... I'll probably have on me.
Oh, yeah. Can I do your civic, civic reading? About that, is it going?
Sure.
Not going? Uh, I'm fine. I think that's going. One day, two days?
Yeah.
Three days?
Now.
Probably, let me double check.
Danny, you want to lead us in the pledge?
I'll do. The pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America. And as we are called, we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Bueller, here. Commissioner Day.
Here.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yeah.
Commissioner Rube.
Here.
Commissioner Robertson.
Here.
Commissioner Speaker.
Here.
Commissioner Terry.
Here. Okay, so approval of minutes. I know that you use the new, uh, software to do the minutes. Is there any way? I don't want to ask you guys to do any more work on this, but I feel like they need edited before they get sent out.
I did have somebody read them, so we were still, there were still a lot that needed to be done.
So, I, I mean, I had some changes, but I didn't have a chance to go through them all, so...
And I was very, like, in how it was written, it was not... You could tell there was still parts that could be kind of cleared up. Throughout.
So I'm not, I mean...
I'll just go back to the way I was doing it.
Yeah.
But I won't use any transcription or anything. It's how I'll do it.
And I know that I repeat myself, but I repeated myself like 50,000 times.
But see, some of that I typed, I didn't necessarily take from the transcription. I went back and read it. We'll try again.
My question, if I can add to that, Mike, you've got a little bit of a...
Yeah, just...
My question is...
Well, she tried a new software.
Tyler's with us. What, what's the requirement or best practice for the how comprehensive minutes should be in a meeting?
Well, number one, they're all recorded.
But they aren't our official record.
They're not official records, so the minutes just need to reflect what was discussed. Now, and how comprehensive, that's a, you know, that's a subjective matter. So, what it comes down to is if you all agree to, that the minutes capture what was discussed, then I think that you need the, the spirit of the law for that. As long as you're not cutting corners, not leaving things out, you get to meet of it, I think you're good. So, do you need a transcript? No, that's not what minutes are, but again, just making sure it encompasses the meat of what was discussed.
So, my experience, which is not in this environment, is that a lot of minutes cover, this topic was discussed by board, by the organization. And then if there was a decision made, that's recorded very clearly, correct? But, um, I found a person that were both minutes like this most recent, caused more, create more confusion almost, because it's harder to capture the information. Personal preferences, as long as we stay well within the guidelines of the law, that, that we take the opposite stance, which is short, succinct, this topic was discussed. I don't think there's any way to accurately, in seven minutes, capture all that was just discussed in the last debate. And if there's a decision made, it needs to be recorded clearly. In fact, the best ones I've seen, they always highlight those involvements, so you can quickly see where the decision was made. But personally, as a former commissioner on this commission, I'd like to see much more abbreviated minutes that are really, a discussion on this topic was had. We have a recording, it's not official, but they can refer to it, media can refer to it.
The recordings would be now would be this, because our charter says that the written or the official, I do not have to keep those recordings. So the recordings would not be available. But you could include the transcript from the software in the official minutes.
I don't, I don't think that's a last decision.
I was gonna say, it would just cause chaos.
I don't think any AI bot should be recording what happened in these meetings.
And all I did was use some of what it did. I just was trying to save some time, and we will do it going forward.
This is not, this for me is not a criticism.
I don't feel that I can do this item was discussed, because I did that a couple of meetings ago, and I left some commissioners' concerns out. So, I will just go back to the previous way I was doing this.
I do, like, especially like, public comment, I mean, I know he was very lengthy when he was talking to, which, but... But I also feel kind of like, it's just one more thing, I guess if you could go back to how we were doing it, but... Because some of this stuff is really good, like the numbers that we had on the public hearing, like, that was really good, like the numbers that were included.
If somebody's gonna confirm those?
I, yeah.
If we're gonna include them in here, it comes to public record. Somebody's gonna go through and proofread all the numbers and make sure they're perfect.
It's a resolution, so you know.
If it's our resolution, of course, but they can refer to the resolution too.
The numbers she's talking about were in the resolution. And one more thing, remember, we now have to comply with the new law that requires our actual physical recording. So both audio and video recordings on our website, so we do that too. And those are only up for a year, and then they can go away.
So I know people, especially city commission meeting minutes, I do know that sometimes people go back and are like, well, what exactly was discussed?
Well, and yeah, six years ago. You'll see in here, when we talked about angle parking, that was something that I provided to you guys, so you could get a glimpse at what the previous commission thought when they made that decision.
Yeah.
Just to maybe to give you a little bit different perspective, if, if the minutes are going to be considered the record, and the only, if they're gonna be considered in detail what was discussed, I for one, that will spend a lot of time, and it'll make you a lot of feedback, a lot of feedback. I don't like the way that sentence was written, I think you do capture the essence of the discussion, I think this needs to be in here. As opposed to, there is a record, it is recorded, and I just, I think we run the risk of having wrong information in five-page minutes with details that are one person's interpretation of how the discussion went, nothing against Nikki, but one person's interpretation, be no different if it was mine. Rather than, rather succinct minutes that mention the discussion and then had votes that were taken or decisions made. It's just one point, my opinion. I think, I think there's a, two sets, two edges to that sort of, and I can be careful with that. So many people back and read those minutes, and they could be misinterpreted very easily if it's not written perfectly.
My opinion would be to have an audio recording saved and have these, I looked at this and I'm thinking, wow, that's taking up somebody's a lot of time and things like that. If I have a question, I can go listen to the audio. That's, so I'm kind of agreeing with Tim, this could, in my opinion, could be a lot shorter, and then keep the audio, what, for three years, you said?
No. Our official record is the minutes per our chart.
Right. Can we change that?
You'd have to go back through, I don't know how a charter change works.
And have audio be the official record? Tim, is that something that...
Yeah, either way, I, I just think that having a single, such a, such a comprehensive interpretation runs as much risk as having a shortened, abbreviated one. That's all.
And you guys, like, there was no concern with the previous minutes? The amount of information presented, that was pretty spot on with the...
Well, I think if a commissioner says, I wasn't, my comment wasn't made and they ordered it in, got it?
Yeah, we've done that before.
And keep in mind too, just what you're doing right now, the approval of minutes, that's where your critique comes. This is what, because you're, you're correct, this is, we're all people here, so your interpretation's different from mine, different from Nikki's. When you go to that approval, that's where you want to make sure your words are laid out as you said them. So, you guys already have to do that process. As for the, the form of it, that's just, I, I think feedback's been heard today, and I think moving forward, I think, let Nikki do, do it the way she wants to, with your guys' approval on the next meeting.
So I think, I agree with that, so what I think is, don't redo these minutes. Let's, if commissioners could just go through, but if there's errors, yeah, but I'm saying like, don't redo these ones. Let, as a commission, we could probably go through these and...
Go back to the way she was doing it.
And then from, from now on.
And Nikki, my comments are, no judgment of what you were doing, at all. I just, it's philosophically, scale of it, is all I'm saying.
So, commissioners, I don't think we could probably approve these tonight, which is unfortunate, and part, partly because I was like... But, um, if everybody could read these and go through them, and we can approve them on December 2nd, this bunch as it is, and then Nikki will get the other, the next, tonight's minutes to us as we're done for. If that works for everybody. So we are not going to approve the seven minutes right now. No courtesies, no proclamations, board and commission reports. Tim, I'll start on your end of the table. Do you have any board commission reports?
No, I'm not on the board's question, so I'll go ahead.
Do we want to talk about the tip meeting this morning? Wasn't there a tip board meeting this morning?
I don't know that we have anything to discuss with the group at this time. I think, Tim, do you want to briefly discuss, I think the tip board will be coming and doing a five to 10 minute, kind of educational...
Yeah, the tip board would like to come and, there's, the tip board would like to come and do a short, five, 10, 15 minute Q and A, get any questions answered that this board might have, this commission might have, and give some feedback on kind of the big issues that are on the table for the future. But there's not, there's nothing very dramatic right now. There is concern that tips in general may be on the docket for some tough discussion in the legislature this...
And you know what, that happens every time, every time.
But it's maybe a little more pointed discussion this year, and so there's some real concern about that. The one other comment, I guess I could pass along, is that the, this commission approved a revolving loan fund grant to the Broadway apartment complex, I'll make sure I'm using the right terminology, and that was not used. In the end, they did not use that, they used a different funding source, and it had to do with complication of the time and how fast they had to close on smaller loans, and that we couldn't close quite faster. So that's, that's a topic that was of discussion, and we have to figure some, some solutions on how to make that time, our timeframe fit their timeframe. That's our call.
Yes, yep. So, did they want to come to the December 2nd meeting?
I think that would be agreeable with the group.
Like, come for committee in the whole, you think?
But kind of a shared, they said either meeting in December, and we could partner with somebody else.
You don't need the whole meeting, we could do it for 15 minutes, unless this commission wants a lot of information on tip and tip.
And has a lot of questions.
That's all I have to report.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Uh, the airport board met last, well, whenever, the first Wednesday of March. And the Nexus contract will be up for renewal in two years, and the amount paid will be increased to coincide with the new fees that we have put into effect. The terminal parking lot has been paved and it looks really nice. They did hire Jeremy Johnson to replace Kurt Erlison, to meet him at the meeting. Mr. Sinak, bless this poor man's heart, I think, anyway, he found piles of rocks on his property. And doing some research, the airport manager did, Mr. Hartman's hired man did not know where the property line was, or the fence line. And so he just piled all of these rocks, though they happen to be on Mr. Sinak's side. But, they will be removed, so Mr. Sinak was happy. OPI and the dragsters tour are conflicting on dates and times, but it will be, they, they will get it worked out, so that it will be fine. The terminal building, the windows, and all the painting is done. And then, then there's the big hanger, and we must check, um, there has to be a check for... Yeah, well, I, I, yeah. Lead, lead painted, and, right, I can't even do my own writing, that's pretty bad. And make sure that, well, anyway, the contaminants, and then we have to see if it's structurally sound, and we'd be able to withstand a new door to allow the jets to park in there, personal jets. And then we are not going to get involved in a lot of money put out and then find out that we can't do anything, because if the hazardous materials or the structure is not sound enough to do it. So that is pretty much it.
Diana, are they using the Brownfield program and assessment funds available for free assessments for Snowy Mountain Development?
Not, not yet.
Make sure they utilize that.
Yeah, so, can I yell out right now?
Sure.
Just to clarify, so the, the big tur, the big hangar up at the airport, the old war to air, originally had a giant door, it was a sectional door that pulled it over, way back when they had bombers up there. That door was put out of commission, I'm just guessing, in the 60s maybe? And a bi-fold door, about half the width, was put in. That bi-fold doors had aged and had problems, and it works, but it doesn't work when it's super cold, and there's some issues with it. There was some federal funding called Bill's Grant that was more lenient, where they came out of COVID, grants, packages, and that money can be used for things, non-traditional things at the airport, let's call it, not asphalt paving and those kinds of things. So the board has been looking into, can we put a newer, larger door on to let larger aircraft park inside that? We have a lot of large jets coming into the airport, if you're not aware of it, they have a lot of traffic, large jets, every single day. A lot of local residents in the outlying areas now fly in, especially this time of year. And so we're looking at, can we use that Bill's Grant money and put a big door on? The challenge becomes, they will, in order to use that money, you have to prove that the hangar is good for the next 20 years. And to do that, you also have to prove that there's no contamination that would cause you to not use that hangar, or that would cause a problem. So first you have to look at contamination and problems. So the board decided to go ahead and use some of its own money, don't have a lot of it, there's not a big budget. We had, had just enough, we could scrounge up to go and get a study done to find out if there were any contaminants in the, in the hangar, knowing that there's some paint down there that might be lead paint, and then what would it take to clean that up? Don't know where it's gonna go yet, waiting for that report back to see what it is. If it is, it's not a catastrophe, there's no big burning problem, it should, we may not be able to move ahead with using that money for the door. I'll, I'll add one other comment that I had made, which was, the terminal parking lot, if you drive up there, the federal, the FAA gives our airport money for projects, capital improvement projects on a regular basis, we've been really fortunate to get a lot of grants, and usually they fund it 95, out of 90, or 90% of this funded by the FAA. We locals have to come up with 10 to 15, 5 to 10% to match that. And so where does that come from when we have a break-even budget at the airport every year? Because it's really a break-even budget, and if it's a snowy year, or really cold year, then that budget may just evaporate quickly, for use of fuel and so forth. And so, the last few years, we've been looking at all the other things that need to be improved, and one of them is the old terminal building, which houses, this wildlife parks. This wildlife parks, I nearly said that wrong, and, and the airport operations, and the conference room that's up there, which is a public conference room. That parking lot has been just falling apart, and it hasn't been redone in, I'm just guessing, 40 years. And so, Brian, our airport manager, put in with the board's approval for a grant from the state Division of Aeronautics, it's part of the Department of Transportation, and asked for, for about $100,000, a little over $100,000, to fix that parking lot. It was falling apart, it was just literally coming apart, and if we didn't do something quickly, it was gone, we'd have to return it to gravel. That money, by the way, comes from an aviation fuel tax, so the aviation pays for it itself. It goes in a big pot, and then the Division of Aeronautics, and the Bureau, excuse me, the Board of Aeronautics hands that out to airports all across the state. We did get a $100,000 grant, which was remarkable, we used that, and if you go up there now, we have a beautiful parking lot that should last another 30 years, 40 years. That's all, if it's properly maintained. But it's really hard on a shoestring budget, because we have a very large airport, much bigger than most, or most cities our size, which means we have a lot more asphalt and a lot more structures to maintain, and we don't have any bigger budget. And, this is not a complaint, but the airport, as you know, doesn't get any mills from the county or the city, so it's self-sustaining, off of its own rent, basically, off of the properties that it has, and then it gets some money like this. So, did a great job, got a nice big capital improvement project done, would otherwise not have gotten done, and I think we should just be proud of, we, we, the city owns half of that, 50/50 owners with the county, and didn't have to come back and ask the taxpayers for any money, so that's the important part. Nice new asset without taxpayer funding, not, not locally taxpayer funding.
When, um, when does the airport come in here?
Usually in the winter.
Or no?
No, it's spring or...
Because he always talks a little bit about the timing when he comes, yeah.
I feel like it's late spring. I was thinking January. That feels like...
We could, we could have, we could have Brian come in anytime, I could sit over there, I'm actually on the Board of Aeronautics for the state of Montana.
He is, that's why he knows so much.
That's why I'm kind of involved in it, I have to abstain from a lot of discussions and votes in certain spots, but Lewes Town does a lot with not much money, and I've seen all the airports in the state that ask, have their hands out every single year, and Lewes Town typically does have its hand out looking for something, but does a good job of substantiating it. I'll, I'll be honest with you, the one critique, the Board of Aeronautics and Helena folks always have, is that there are no mills. There's no money, cash, put out by the city or the county to owners of the airport to keep it going. And so it's always operating on a shoestring budget, and I'm telling you that sooner or later, there's gonna need to be something done down, not down the next few years, but it's a huge piece of property that will deteriorate over time, and needs to be supported by... Kind of like that.
Tim, is that different in other communities then?
Absolutely. A lot of communities have a certain number of mills go directly to the airport, to support the airport. And that is, has been in the past, the critique of members of the board saying, well, why can't the owners support this with cash? Why does it have to be, be like, this building, you know, if it could only support itself with donations in this building, and taxation in this building, how would it keep going? Or whatever the facility might be, that's the challenge.
Diana, how long have you been on the airport board? Years you've been on the airport board?
Well, let's see.
She has her own chair.
She's been on the board a long time.
I have, I have.
That's awesome.
We have a really strong airport board.
And it's not a big board, right?
No. There's only five of them.
Strong and very committed.
Yep, and we have what, three pilots?
Three pilots on the board.
Yeah.
And you represent, on the airport board group, represent the community kind of at large, right?
The city at large.
You represent the city at large, as a citizen. Thank you, sorry to pull up.
No, that's fine.
You're good.
Diana, did you have anything to add?
No.
Well, thank you. Ron?
Nothing to report.
Yes, the park and rec room on November 6th, it was kind of a very short meeting, so, no, that was good. So just some things to comment on, they, the Civic Center's been seeing a lot of vandalism that's happening at the Frank Day Park, and they feel like now, it's mostly being done by kids, they've got a pretty good grip on it, they're doing some restitution, and feeling like the new rec room remodel is helping quite a bit with that. They've made it into a little bit more now the family rec room, rather than just cater for youth, but a lot of families are using that in addition to the youth. They're looking into a camera system and some auto locks for both Creekside and Frank Day Park, for the bathrooms there. We heard a presentation from Bill Berg about the... We heard a presentation from Bill Berg about the status of the multi-use building, which has been seeing a lot of construction activity with concrete that was just recently poured. They may need some sidewalk updates next summer due to the construction. And also we discussed how the funds are being accounted for with the Ferguson County Department. We had an activity report from the Civic Center, they're keeping very busy with women's volleyball, junior high basketball, special Olympics basketball has been in there and pickleball plays every morning. The family rec room remodel has been coming quite along, they have new paint, furniture that's been donated and the space is being used. The new vending machines will come soon and Kelly Henderson talked about how there's a lot of community support, a lot of people in the community are getting involved. The trails purchased, Friends of the Trail helped purchase a new mower. And the new fitness equipment is installed, I don't know if anyone has been on the trail.
I saw the picture on Facebook, but I haven't used it. Oh, I was out there using it.
I know Doug's used it a time or two. And then also just good comments about the story walk being up and how the way it looks. Rick Bonds is the Trails Manager, he also came and did a report regarding just being, how things are looking on the trails. They're seeing just a lot of erosion at some different bridges and they're looking at a lot of work that needs to be done to prevent more erosion and keeping those bridges safe for pedestrian and public safety. Lots of trimming is being done, mowing is caught up behind the cemetery, painting will be done behind the cemetery in spring at twenty-five. The bridge and the frog ponds that have the ballers, those that were pulled out, that's been all fixed. Maps are now posted at the kiosks and there was a big compliment made to Kelly for her social media presence regarding the Civic Center. And that is about it, did I miss anything?
Nope. I have a quick question, so Bill Berg did the, and then you talked about the rec districts, who does the financials on that? Do you guys, you know, old birds count as that?
And Ross Butcher is kind of the point man that's.
He used me, now Jennifer's on the board.
Well, Jennifer's in, we're here.
So when did they get that funding? I know that we approved it and stuff, like, does that go through after it's built?
That hundred thousand we got two years ago, we're gonna start the process. And then they went within the last month or two and they have at least cursory said that they'd be interested in the additional fifty, though that hasn't been fully committed, there was no vote or anything on that, but we anticipate getting at least that much if we need to.
Do they have other questions for Cory? Commissioner Spica, do you have a report?
I do not.
I believe you have a big meeting coming up on Thursday?
That's correct, yep.
So, personally Mountain Development, we think it's their quarterly meeting.
The Library Board will also meet on Thursday, the twenty-first, at one P M. in the library. Stairs meeting.
And then the Central Montana Foundation meets on November twenty-sixth, at two P M. Alright, what do we got, what's next? City Manager's Report.
Yes, just as a reminder, this year Thanksgiving is November twenty-eighth and so all offices will be closed that day. The L D A has organized a new event for Black Friday that weekend. And they have dubbed it their hometown holiday weekend with lots of activities and events to encourage people to shop local. And so you can find out more information there. The Christmas stroll will be the following weekend, which is December sixth, with the usual activities, which involve parade, bright country nights, things like that. Ice skating has already closed up deworming buildings down there and they are gearing up for another successful year of hockey and so they'll be starting that soon, making ice and doing other things down there. Obviously, the Civic Center also has an opportunity to support activities at the ice skating rink and other outdoor activities, including renting snowshoes, press country skis, and ice skates. And they're available and very economical for people to use and have been quite a hit over the years. We currently have the bid out for the emergency generator and centralized battery backup.
Is this for this building or for your building?
For our, our entire building is covered with the emergency backup generator. And then the battery backup, it will just be the critical infrastructure in dispatch. So phones, radios, their computer consoles, so, not the entire building for that. And then that was part of our slipper grant, which we have allocated and kind of moved that project forward. The other component to those projects is the sidewalk in front, or along Watson in front of the city office. And so we're still finalizing some design there. Recently, the sidewalk at Veterans Park was removed and so volunteers from the American Legion did the project to replace that. The city did haul that off, but it's a great asset and those volunteers always take a lot of pride in that park, so that's nice. And then over the last month, there's been a couple meetings. The Board of Adjustments met, they had four maintenance applications that they heard that night, three of them were for fences and all being six-foot fences. And then one of them was a request to approve a shipping container in a residential lot. And they approved all of those and then on the twenty-first, the Planning Board will have a conditional use application and a hearing for that on the daycare located at the Presbyterian Church. That's all we have.
What's the shipping container?
A Connex for storage located in the area of the pool.
Okay.
Permanent?
It's permanent and initiative. The individual said, and there was actually a conditional approval on that, that, but basically it was approved for the existing owner. And at that time, the, any future owner can have to come back to the board for approval or insurance, he would take it with him. It was a new shipping container. The other condition was screaming, adjacent to the trail down by the pool. And so the board asked that it be landscaped with shrubs and things like that to cancel.
Seems very common. Some of those trails ought to be fixed. So for new commissioners, when this emergency generator and centralized battery backup in the Watson sidewalk was something that the commission approved of, Justin had come into us, Lou's chief had come into us, and Jill, and they had a couple of projects and that was the one we picked.
We had a whole list of them, just put together a big project, so through the House bill that opened up some funding and I think we had three hundred and ninety thousand or something dollars allocated to the city.
It was, it's probably a year and a half ago, it's been a while.
The last legislative session coming out of that.
We just did it this year. No.
We had to apply for it.
Yeah, but we chose this project, it's been a while ago. It was a while ago.
Yeah, and so we had to have, I think last December, we had to have a list like finalized and it had several different projects in different city-owned buildings. It's really focused on, and I think it's been there, in the name of I guess state local infrastructure partnerships. So it's really focused on city-owned infrastructure and we had a multitude of different projects, but those were the ones that kind of rose to the top.
Yes, I just, I just wanted to point that out because it's just been something that we, it's been kind of a long time coming. So it'll be good to have it. Any question, other questions on the City Manager's Report? Okay, public comment on non-agenda items, so anything that's not on the agenda, does anybody have any comment on that? You have a comment, sir, could you please say your name and who you are?
My name is Dave Haller, I live in One Thousand Hall Plaza. And my question is, as a safety concerns citizen, what's these motorhomes, campers and most of the stuff? So apparently, most of them have found the home forms, who are not on the street anymore. In my particular case, being a safety concerns citizen, it's a motorhome that parks in front of the guy's house right next to me. Backing out or pulling out of my driveway, I lose about eight foot of visibility. There's four kids for sure living on the block now, they're all riding scooters and skateboards and bicycles and kids are kids, they don't pay attention. Worst case, I don't want to live with this the rest of my life because it's a preventable accident. This motorhome just is, it's a, it's an accident waiting to happen.
Does it belong to the, to the person that lives in the house?
Yeah, it belongs and, and right now, he's got it off, he's always had it off his driveway until the first of April, he puts it on the street and it stays there. But my concern is as a safety citizen, that this is a preventable accident, something's gonna happen someday. When we pull out or back out of our driveway, the neighbors across the street, when he moves it over there, has a safety issue. But there's kids coming down, they come down over there all the time over this hill. The other day, you know, how fast they're going, how black mark they should make, if he don't sign them to bite you. So I lose eight foot, I pull out, they're not paying attention, boom. Broken arm, broken leg, waistpin, worst case scenario, the kid breaks his back in something or even gets killed and lives the rest of his life in a wheelchair. I don't want that on my conscience for the simple fact it's a preventable accident. So I don't know what you guys can do about it, if you're gonna allow them from the first of April through the first of November to be on the street.
Is it still there now? Is it still there right now?
No, he finally moved it, last eleven, last Monday. Put it back on his driveway, so apparently he doesn't have to have it out there. He's got a guy living there, he's had a guy living in it all summer. I mean, I have an issue with it, I've been, I've complained about it several times, but you wanna check the records.
Yep.
The last time I complained about it, pardon, I remember you.
And so our ordinance committee met and we actually have some thoughts about Tyler, I don't know if you recall it well enough to kind of just summarize, that's a lot of our exact concern, is, you know, the five days, vehicles, whether it's a motorhome or a trailer or a car, have to be moved. And so people have gotten very creative and will play games of moving things just a few inches or things like that. And so we recognize that and we're working to address that.
Well, originally I was told the first day of first November, it could be there for five days and then it had to be removed.
Now, especially that streak, isn't, is Mount Pleasant one of those through streets or emergency routes?
No, no, it's not.
Except by the hot tub.
Oh, next to it.
So the last time that I was told it could be moved six inches, that's all you gotta move.
But after November first, it's supposed to be off, so.
I understand that, but.
But yes, you're correct, and from April first, is it April first?
April first to November first, it's, they can only move it five inches.
However, we have something that is hopefully gonna be in place before April first.
Well, and this is my concern because, and I'm sure each and every one of you have kids and you wouldn't want somebody calling up and saying your kid just run into a pickup because he backed out of the driveway that couldn't see and he got a broken leg or a broken arm, breaking back, or maybe even kill him. And also for my safety, but for everybody else's sake. It's a, it's a, to me, it's a preventable traffic hazard. And I, I don't know, I would not, it's such a great, everybody tells, no, you're just gonna live through it and you just ignore it. But when you step out of your house and that's the first thing you see, how do you ignore it if they, you don't.
So sir, as, as the Commissioner-at-Large, Chair Kellyanne Holly said, we are putting together some ordinances that we are trying to address the issues of motorhomes, of pull behind campers, things of that nature. We've been looking at other cities around the state and the issues that they've dealt with. And we're seeing similar issues here, we're listening to people like you, because you're not the first person that's made complaints about this and about it. So what we plan to do is put some, to tweak these ordinances, that is going to be involving, again, these large vehicles like you're talking about and parking and how, how to enforce it, but that's, that's something that'll come down the line. That we have to have some time for public input, for the committees to review everything to make sure that we're making the smart choice moving forward that is in tune with what Lewistown wants. So we've certainly heard your, your concerns and we're working on it.
Well, I appreciate that.
And we're hoping to have it done by April first. We'll have it done by April first.
Well, I hope so because it's not only for my safety, but it's, this is all over town. I mean, there's, you drive around town and there's stuff that's, up on, on Severton Boulevard, right on the corner, there was a pistol that sat there all summer and you can't, I mean, that's a bad intersection anyway. But you can't, you can't see, I mean, I've got, if I'm going up Boulevard, I don't, I, that's true. But if somebody's coming down the street and they can't see me, then they make the California stop, which is my. And boom, it happens that fast. And I would appreciate it if I didn't have to look at it next summer, all summer. This has been going on for three years. And I, I honestly hope that something's done. Because apparently they found homes for them, so they could probably leave them there until they eat them and load them and leave and unload them and because I've got campers, I could do the same thing, but I don't because of public safety.
We appreciate you coming in tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, the consent agenda, acknowledgement of claims that have been paid from November first to November fourteenth. Does anyone need to discuss any questions? Not entertain a motion? I move that we accept the claims.
Senator?
It's been moved by Fisher Hughes, second by Fisher Rube's. Raise your hands right now. Yeah. I need to raise that then, raise hands, just accept, raise hands, okay, all those in favor, please raise your right hand or if you're on Zoom, say. Alright, so moving on to the regular agenda, so the first thing we're gonna do is we're gonna discuss the angle parking. We're not making a decision on this tonight, we're just gonna discuss the angle parking. So first of all, I want to bring your attention to the letters, they put together a little packet for us. Justin wrote a letter, Derek Perry wrote a letter, and then we have some minutes and a letter from two thousand seventeen. We haven't, just first thing, said anything about this?
I can recap, yep, I learned stuff from them and got some feedback from them as well.
Yeah.
And then I did pass up the letter that was actually a phone call and just kind of summarized to by our office staff. And so, again, this is directly out of the excerpts of the minutes from that original meeting in two thousand seventeen, where the city commission was approached with the plan that's provided. It was actually Lisa Wright that was looking at developing the power merk building. And so her architect brought in a drawing that proposed angle parking. And you can see the numbers of spots prior to, if you remember, they had parallel parking along the west side and then the two handicap spots closest to Main Street on the east side of Third Avenue. There was nothing because there's a fire hydrant on the second half of the east side there. And so the existing spots were eight. And then their drawing said, you know, given this information, they. And so, their existing spots were eight, and then their drawing said, you know, given this information, they projected sixteen. I went and counted, it's probably fourteen to fifteen, with what actually sits in there, but there is three handicap spots included in that, so. We did receive a letter, was from First Bank, that was not opposed to that. I did reach out and talk to the incumbents last week, and he said the same thing, they didn't have any concern with the angle parking that's currently there. And so, that was answered. You can see that Justin provided kind of the information regarding the crash since the angle parking, and so there had only been one crash in that. Again, it was a hit and run, so not really related to necessarily the angle parking, but just one accident at that intersection, and then one citizen complaint, which also didn't have anything to do with the parking from that, since the angle parking was installed. We reached out to all of the department heads, and Doug was here and briefed us briefly before he left this evening. His concerns were mostly with the land use plan, where we all heard the public's concern for parking, and the lack of parking, especially in the downtown. And so, he would have a difficult time with the decision that was inconsistent with what we heard from the public through the land use plan, which is, by changing parking, we could decrease the number of available parking spots in the downtown. As far as the fire department, again, their concern is if it is fully parked, primarily, it's the handicap spot where they have to place the truck and get the outriggers out. They can't get all the way up to the very top of the main building if the handicap spot are occupied. So it does pose a potential challenge for them in that.
Did they offer an opinion?
Just the facts of, of it does make it difficult.
It does hinder their truck.
Again, not impossible, but more difficult, and even having other cars parked there may be the same thing.
But they didn't weigh into an opinion on the other. And then American Prairie?
Yeah, you want me to keep going?
Yeah, keep going, you're doing so well.
And then we received a letter from American Prairie, David wrote this letter, where he would like to see parallel parking, so to go back to parallel parking. He did have someone asked of, you know, making sure that there was time limits, handicap stuff, things like that, but he did like the thought of angle, or sorry, parallel parking going away from angle. Because the angle parking provided some challenges for them, and that was vehicles pulling onto the sidewalk, causing damage, making it difficult to remove snow. And then, the ice, so the kind of hazardous condition, that if the snow isn't removed, it can be created. And then, the challenge is that, you know, cars have to go further out into the lane. And then he repeated the concerns of the fire department, he shared in that, which is, if those are, are fully utilized, then it's difficult for them to get their fair, fighting that for other stuff. And then, to summarize the letter, or the message that was received by staff today, it resonates that listening to the post office, said that she has seen it work well in the past, where on the streets that allow angle parking, that it be limited to one-way traffic. She kind of went into, she doesn't care for the one-way traffic, she feels it dangerous and vehicles back out, things like that, because there may be some areas, or ways, that angle parking would work in the area.
Thanks, Holly. So, what is kind of, what are people doing?
What comment?
Yes.
So, um, ready to turn this off, I'm not getting it?
I think everybody can hear pretty well.
Morning, honey. So, of all mornings, which I thought was really interesting, I never see Officer Genesis on the sidewalk, and I saw him on the sidewalk because of the letter, you know, of course, that was just recently written by him. And I was like, what the heck? You've, you've never had anyone go in there and complain, because I've complained many times about the angular parking on that particular street. So, he had mentioned that he was also, and I didn't feel that his letter reflected what he communicated to me in person, and he's not here, of course, to, what have you. He, he told me personally that he was not for having angular parking in the avenues, but that's not in his letter. He suggested the angular parking to be done on something like Juno or Broadway, or one of the other wider streets. So I, I have a hard time, like, hearing what he said in person, and then reading this, we're very too different from my conversation with him on the street. So I just hope everybody can take that into consideration, because when I read his letter, I, I feel like I got the impression that the police department doesn't feel that there needs to be any change at all. But there definitely needs to be a change. And I told him I would be more than happy to go in, and I brought photos tonight of what it looks like as well, and I'd be happy to complain every day if that would help in any way, but I, I know that, what would be that, do you know what I mean? I just don't feel that that's necessary, because we've already spoken a lot on this particular topic. But, but that's just my comment that I wanna make, in having that personal conversation with him, the things that he communicated with me were not reflected in his letter.
Well, I think what, I mean, really, what we're being asked of, in kind of the office of it, was specific to the angle parking on Third Avenue, not looking at other places or things like that.
And you've discussed, I believe, like, how many, by going back to the dual-side parking on the street, how many spaces that would actually create? Because I know that that's the concern for everybody, is less downtown parking.
In my opinion, the first consideration should be the fire department's access, even to the point of having them take a truck down there and put out their stabilizers and see just how much room they need. Okay, that would be my first priority. I really, I learned a lot here, that idea of a center line and a one-way street, you know, that might alleviate a whole bunch of the problem. We'd have to measure that out. I look at a map here, they show like eighteen angled parking spots or twelve, and that's not realistic. If a guy went down there with a tape measure, there's not room for that many, but. Another thing I think we could do is, the committee, the parking committee, could check into having signage stating that parking for vehicles under, let's pick a number, twenty feet long, eighteen feet long. So they're not sticking out, you know, like that one picture I took, and it was incredible, that bus was taking up pretty much the whole thing. There's a lot of things that the committee needs to look at. But, you know, again, with these, what I've been able to read so far, though, the one-way street and having a center line would, might, might help a lot. We need to explore that, yes, thank you.
So, my question would be, so the center line would only be if that street was a one-way, correct?
No, it would be two-way.
Because you'd take a center line right now, I mean, Officer Genesis and I were standing there on the corner of Third and Main, and those cars, they're backed up, that would be, they'd be backed up.
Two-way.
And that would say.
Would not be in the middle of the road.
No.
It would be shifted to the eastbound lane, so people that maybe weren't from the area knew, this is the eastbound lane, this, or the northbound and southbound.
But would there either be room for somebody on the other side of that?
Yes, there is, yeah. Again, I think there was always a thought that there wouldn't be small passenger buses, or big lawn trucks, and that's where the common sense thing isn't being applied. You know, I wouldn't feel comfortable with parking there if I thought my car or vehicle was sticking out, and that's not necessarily how others feel.
And the handicap parking is not utilized as much as, as the handicap was on the other side of the street. I, you know, I have, I mean, when I go down town, there's never any, anybody in the handicap, I mean.
I, I'm kind of new to the topic, although I drive that quite a bit, and it's the newest commissioner. And I would just point out that I'm not hearing anyone loudly arguing that we need to keep angle parking on that street, and I'm not sure why so much time and energy is being spent on the topic. And why don't, we don't just not worry about them? I mean, I understand, it was on the planning commission, I guess it was called, and I understand Doug's concern about parking downtown, but it seems like there's much more contention about this than there should be, and that we should make a quick decision and get something changed, and make it a safer spot, where people aren't pulling up on the curb, and backing into traffic where they can't see behind the next large vehicle. And find some other solutions for a little bit more parking downtown, that really was the goal of the planning commission's discussion, because we look at some bigger issues about parking downtown and rearranging parking, and I don't think the two are equivalent.
I would reiterate that we don't have a lot of pro-angle parking conversation. We also don't necessarily need to jump through fifteen different hoops to make the parking, angle parking work, when there is the option of going back to a parallel parking and having a quick fix.
Yeah.
That is coherent with what our city layout actually does. Having one small city block with angle parking doesn't necessarily create a lot of positivity one way or the other, because it's so different, and it has become kind, it has become a nuisance. So what would the process be as far as, like, I mean, putting signs up, painting that, like, putting it back into?
So there'd be really minimal things to do either way, because, you know, the spots aren't striped currently, there's a center line, there is signage already for handicaps, so those don't really, it doesn't matter if they're parallel or angled, it would still, we might have to move a sign to make sure that there would be appropriate distance, things like that. But really, there would be, I mean, a little bit of street painting and maybe the room.
So you think one hand.
Move it.
That part would be enough on that corner?
Yeah, I, yeah.
And the state has done, I mean, now there's one in front of the Day's Building across there, so the state has done some analysis on handicap spots and kind of changed to that, too, so.
I think it's more, I think it's more important to do some of the things that American Prairie mentioned, that would also help the Days on their building, which is a kind of loading zone, short-term parking out there for loading and unloading vehicles and so forth, and not take up the whole street with that, but put a few on there to recognize the fact that groups are coming to that facility.
And if we went away from angle parking, would that mean the parallel parking on both sides of the street would return, or would just be one side of the street? There's no reason that you couldn't do both sides.
No, I would just go from one side.
You wouldn't lose at that many spots?
No.
The deep, I mean, it goes to eight if we did it the same way, and I don't think between the stop sign and that fire hydrant, you can safely get, I mean, there is specific distances there where you can get a car parked in that, for the eastbound lane or east side. And so you go back to probably eight spots.
So I think the, the biggest problem would be just the education, that it's this, I don't know, the one angle parking. Because like, up at the Calvert, where we have angle parking, if, if there's nobody angle parked in front of the Calvert, people would park parallel. So, like, I don't know how we would do the education part of that in a town that gets pretty entrenched and doesn't want to change. How we're going to do the, you know, education that now it's a parallel parking.
So just kind of going back to what you said, that Doug had communicated, and then based off the land use plan for that, you know, that would be with the intention that the people that were parking there were coming down into the downtown area and shopping, or, or what hap, you know, honoring that two-hour parking or whatever. But I can guarantee that the cars that use the parking on that Third Avenue are people that work in the main building. So, it's, you know, we're basically providing parking spaces for employees, not for people that are patronizing or downtown.
Is there any comments from the public?
Yes.
Okay.
Good to factor, although I, again, the angle problem to begin, I don't tell a man to send, I mean, in, there's an angle, yes, there's maybe, there's like the spots, parking the vehicles, whatever, but the impossible part is, it's like, Lawman mentioned, like, a bump in one through, there's been wide, they can go through that. And number two, the, I went on a travel down with a bicycle, and even, even the bicycle, trying to angle it right, went through that, and then it lifted to the bar, I just went, went, went back to travel, I'm just moving forward.
Thanks, Richard, thank you. Sir, in the back.
Well, thank you, but we'll stay, we'll make English water, sure. We've discussed this topic as a, as a city in C D's many times. I've never heard anyone pro-angle parking, other than saying we need more parking spots downtown. For employees like Commissioner Day said, that work at the bank, I can tell you, it's the same cars that everybody that are there, most of them are on the sidewalk. I'm concerned about the deterioration of the sidewalk, those, those walks are meant for feet, not for trucks.
Oh, yes.
And it, it won't last long, and they'll all have to pay that out of ticks. And that, hell, I joke to Lorraine all the time, this is a Tijuana, you know, it has rules and regulations. If it was parallel parking and those trucks or suburbs were parked parallel, they would be taking up two spots of parallel parking. And why do we say it's okay to do an angle parking, when, you know, people are afraid to ride their bike down the street? I appreciate Officer Genesis' comments about, we only have one accident on that road. Were we proactive or were we reactive? Do we wait till there's fire in a building where a fire truck can't get people out of the building and burn it down, and then somebody pulls up the minutes and say, "You guys discussed this four, five different times at a city commission meeting, and kick it down the street." And not do anything for the sake of eight cars, or nine cars, that are there every day at seven thirty. So it'd be mad or just putting a notice on their car, maybe one weekend, everybody would know who uses that parking. It seems like an overreaction to me, that it needs to be done. I have a personal interest too, because I'm shoveling that snow, and I can only shovel half of the sidewalk, because the cars are pulled up on. It bothers me seeing a street sign in our city on an angle now, instead of straight up and down, like we lived in Tijuana. And that's not appropriate, you know, the commission has, has the ability to say, "We're gonna take care of our citizens rather than employees, we should do it." So that's, that's my two cents. I'm concerned that we've discussed it so many times and not been able to get it yet. So I refer to the commission to act more promptly. I don't know what other further studies need to be done, for the sake of maybe four parking spots.
Thank you. May I ask, what, what is the process to make change for?
What, what was this asking? All it says was, they brought a proposal, and they made the motion to approve the proposed angle parking, so I guess then we'd ask you, would it be better to do a resolution?
I think we best have a resolution, have it laid out in writing, perhaps for discussion, I, I understand that it sounds like you are all leaning one way or another, but give opportunity for the public to come and speak to that resolution as well, I think that's the best course.
Do we have to? I mean, if there's fire tomorrow morning, that's gonna be a really bad decision.
Well, we did put this as a matchlet in one.
Yeah.
Right.
And task could be published actually, I have to make a change to a parking spot?
Well, he's just.
Well, he's suggesting.
It's not.
Was it that?
I just don't, I'm the new commissioner, I don't understand what rises to a resolution versus. Hey, I'm going to make a motion that we return the parking to the other direction, to their spot. I just don't understand the, it's not a taxation issue.
Well, it's going to take time to educate the public and change the signage too. I mean, the angled sign is, I believe, angle parking here between the signs is then.
My concern is.
The papers here, law enforcement could go enforce the two-hour parking law or tell people.
Take fires on some windshields for a couple of days and say, please don't do that. My concern is, it sounds like this can't have been kicked down the road a long time. And I'm just going to question for, it's maybe my eighth or ninth or tenth meeting. And I'm not trying to suggest to us that you're wrong in what you're saying. I'm just saying, do we really need to go to a resolution level for everything like this? Or can we say, let's get it done, move along, we don't have any opposition, it's been discussed how many times?
Can we put on something that's not on the agenda?
Can I make a comment? Yeah. This is the first time it's actually been an item on the agenda since two thousand and seventeen. It's been discussed in public comments, commissioners' minutes. All that, this is the first time that it's been on the agenda as an actual discussion item.
I guess where I'm going as a commissioner is, what rises to the level of a resolution? We closed Main Street for three, just like that for a day, there's not a discussion at this level.
So we do have a process.
It's a long time term.
But there is a process, we can't close.
Okay, let me give you a different example. Listen, Clark changed all their parking with no knowledge by this point, none, no discussion.
No knowledge from the city.
And they, in fact, made it more dangerous, much more dangerous the way they did. And we've had nothing ever brought to this group. I just don't understand within the city, parking, parking regulations, where a sign goes, who makes that decision?
One comment, this would be on the next agenda. So we're not talking kicking it down, from my understanding of the clerk of the commission, the next time I will bring to the city manager to take to the chairman, that this needs to be a resolution on the next meeting.
I don't think it does.
My question is, does it need a resolution? Can public works just change?
We didn't have a resolution to make an angle parking.
I agree.
So why do we have to?
I'm asking the attorney, but also it wasn't put on the agenda as an action item.
I realize, I know that.
I was directed at discussion only and that helped put it.
Right, right.
A resolution is an opportunity for the citizens who voted for us to voice their opinion and it is a courtesy. Maybe it's not a legal mandate, but it is at least a courtesy.
So can we have?
You could probably do it without the resolution.
It might help to just educate. If Will and Heidi put it out there and say, oh, I'm going to get my thing. Yeah, sorry. If they put it out there that, can we tell, can we advertise that that's going to be the proposal of the resolution?
Yeah, that's what I would say.
So if you say that, this just might help educate Will more.
And it will go into effect the very next day.
Yeah, it'll go into effect the next day. So we're going to wait two weeks?
So it'll go, it'll be, I assume it'll be approved on the first meeting of December and it goes into effect immediately. So Kellyanne, if you would just email me what you want on that, I'll be good at PSA and we'll plug it in the next two weeks.
And then we'll put.
Can I ask that the commission direct the law enforcement patrol over the next two weeks and make sure people aren't parking on the sidewalks or protruding out too far to make a hazard for bicycles? Because to have a resolution in two weeks, for what purpose? For what purpose does this serve? Other than you putting the public at risk for another two weeks?
But I don't think we can vote on this tonight.
But you can.
But isn't it a voteable topic?
It was an action of the commission in the past, yes. It was always an action, but like I said, it was advertised as discussion only about how it was put in the paper. That's how I was directed.
Well, the law enforcement, that's up to you.
Well, we can't, there's no guidance for, to make sure there's enough room for a bicycle to go by. So there's specific requirements for travel lanes and things like that. So that can be enforced if you stick out and impede a travel lane. But there's not a quantified to make sure that there's enough room for a bicycle. I mean, it would just simply be the travel lanes that they would have to.
Go off them. I don't have to convert as a graphic.
I guess it's, I thought it's an impossible task because anybody who's driven down that road knows that the car's pushing it out too far. And if you ask the people that are parking on the sidewalk why they're doing it, their response will be, I don't want to get hit. Instead, kicking down the road just for a few parking spots for people who work at the bank is wrong.
You're a voyeur. You know, I know, but I'm saying that we just, we still have to do what we're doing.
I would be suing the city.
On the agenda, I mean, we still have to follow.
Well, yeah, we have to follow the agenda, so. So put it on for an action item next meeting.
Yeah.
As a resolution.
Yeah. I mean, you're a attorney, what's your, I mean.
You should put it on for next time, it's two weeks. It's been angle parking for this long, no major issues. Things can happen, you're taking steps to make it right. You're also giving public notice and they can come and give their input. It's very clear what you will be doing next time. This seems like it's sneaky to then hear, I don't think that's a good idea. So two weeks, I'd say put it back on, put it on the agenda and vote at that time.
So we could vote on it then, that night? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And like I said, then if, then we're doing the process correctly and then also we can get ahead of it a little bit with our media by telling them.
Could I request that our fire chief be at that meeting, please?
Possibly the handicap, maybe two, two handicap areas to offload people from for the ferry.
They want more of the handicap, they want.
I think that'd be in the resolution. I think you guys should give us some direction.
I don't think we as commissioners should be creating traffic patterns and studies. I think we should just put it back like it was.
Because you have two handicap and two regulars.
And if we can put up temporary parking on water for fifteen minutes or something like that to trade it, that's. It's nice because you've got public works.
They know that, there's a five-minute parking in front of the bank. And you know there are cars that sit there all damn days.
Okay, we're going to.
It is an enforcement, it's.
So next meeting, first meeting.
So resolution, if you would put that together, it will impact the next day and we can advertise it that it's on the agenda as an action item with public comments. Yeah. The intent is to change. The intent is to change. You guys got that? Help all your friends.
It looks like that in my house.
Okay. Resolution, next thing. You guys have enough direction, you feel good?
I believe so.
All right, so calling law enforcement, I don't know if you, the law enforcement and then, is it something that you can grab? Are you guys grab to get to the, because you do your.
I'll be on Thursday.
Yeah. But if she can get the PIA, whatever.
Can I just call it as a citizen? I'm just going to call him as a citizen. But I think our big concern is with this meal meeting this weekend, is the shoveling and the cars parking on the sidewalk. I mean, I guarantee if we all go out tomorrow morning, there will be at least two cars pulled up on the sidewalk. So, I mean, yeah, I get the whole safety with the street and being proactive with that, but we would also just like to be able to shovel the sidewalks.
Is there any reasons police department can't go right and go, put it on a windshield like they would in any other city and say, you parked up illegally on the sidewalk?
It's our idea, we don't, yeah, there's no reason they can't.
I mean, give them a warning. Is there any reason they can't go give everybody a warning that's on the sidewalk?
Well, I don't think anybody's disagreeing with any of the, like, this stuff. It's just we do have to follow the process.
Right, but we, we as citizens, I think, like Doug and I, not as a commissioner, but as a citizen, just last week at American Prairie had a huge event and people walked down Broadway and up Third in our sidewalks. I mean, we couldn't even get half of them shoved in. There's not sunlight that hits that, that melted off quick. So we're concerned about the pedestrian safety on those sidewalks, more than anything, more than we are.
So your solution would be?
I spent two hours after the cars had moved, late at night, with salt and then on Saturday, scraping them. And I give rules and procedures, but I've heard time and time again from a judge, there's in the best interest of the child or the best interest of the society or the people, rules are meant to be broken, are meant to be altered. And to say that we're going to kick this down the road so we can give somebody a chance to maybe make a comment, there's not going to be anyone here at this meeting when we know there's going to be snow this weekend.
And we also hear that.
And maybe I'm wrong, but it sounds like the whole commission, police department and the fire department are saying there is a public safety hazard. Why could, why could action not be taken right away, even on a temporary basis? Say, we're going to access speed up now and then in two weeks, we're going to have a resolution and maybe we'll change our mind. But this is our request to be done immediately in the interest of public safety. Well, I disagree that the police department, the fire department say it's a public safety issue. That's not always reflected in the comments. I'm telling you that, I've heard myself from that. What we have in front of the commission, I don't think that's what's reflected.
Public works close that sidewalk for the next two weeks?
They should.
Put barricades up, close the sidewalk and, I mean, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to spike you. I'm saying, I mean, if there's a concern about hazard of people walking down that street and cars on the sidewalk, close the sidewalk for two weeks? Put up some signs and say, this sidewalk is closed for the safety and then ticket people who park on the sidewalk? If we can't make a decision today.
And I don't know what code or statute or regulation says that it has to be an action item on the agenda today. I don't think it exists. I just don't. Because of the things that the commission's already decided or other things that were done without that. Well, I think we've made a proposal and I think the commissioner has made her decision as well. So I don't know if we want to.
Because people are going to, I mean, you're going to have to do it before seven thirty AM. Okay, public hearing to hear comments on resolution number four one eight zero, a resolution authorizing the closure of the city clerk's office, including public works, on December twenty fourth for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six. About this last meeting, is there any comments from the public on the resolution to close those, on those days?
I'm happy with that. They could hold that three years, yes.
He deserved Christmas.
Yes, it's only for the half after. Only if they want to take vacation. All those reasons.
Well, all those reasons. Is there any comment?
That's one question. Okay, one question. What if an employee didn't want to take vacation?
The office, the office will be open.
That make you feel.
And then do they just go in or does everybody have to go in?
No, just them.
Oh, okay.
Or they would stay the other.
I was going to say that.
They're not forcing any employees to take that out.
Just giving them the option.
So if someone in my office must work the whole day, they're going to keep the office open all day?
But you aren't going to be there.
What?
But you aren't going to be there.
Well, if I need to be, I would be there. And if, you know, if you choose to want us to keep it open, then that's what we'll do. That's ridiculous. I'm sorry. It's ridiculous. Is there any comments from the public? I'm going to close public hearing. Discussion in action on the resolution to authorize the closure of the city clerk's office, including public works. So how does that work? It's just the office part, right? Because they work.
It's the office part and, I mean, even if everybody chooses to take this vacation day, they still are on top. There's still coverage.
Well, not. I just had a motion, I need that we approve resolution number four one eight zero, a resolution authorizing the closure of the city clerk's office, including public works on December twenty fourth for twenty twenty four, twenty five and twenty six.
Second. So moved by Fisher Day, seconded by Fisher Buehler, is there any comments from the public? Any other comments from commissioners?
So the employees would like to take a vacation day?
If they want. They want, they can work if they want.
Let's do a roll call vote. We are approving resolution number four one eight zero, Commissioner Buehler.
Aye.
Commissioner Day.
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Aye.
Commissioner Rube.
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson.
Aye.
Commissioner Spica.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
A discussion in action on approving the gravel bids.
So no gravel bids were received, we put them out and no snow hauling bids were received.
Yes, so what are you going to do?
So we'll continue to solicit the snow hauling. In the past, we have not, for the past several years, we haven't got gravel bids. So we play basic market value with, or market cost when we need that material. It's just part of our purchasing policy, make sure we're compliant with that.
Okay, so no gravel bids received and I'll just say discussion in action on approving the twenty twenty five snow hauling bids. No, snow hauling bids were received either, but we continue to solicit. Okay, discussion in action on reappointing mutually agreed upon members Lisa Robinson, Donna Van Tassel and Whitney Potts for an additional three-year term to the board of health. Could you do the breakdown of that, like, of how that was formed, just for Danny and Tim?
Yep, so there is, we have an agreement with the Fergus County to have a city county health board. It's a five-member board. There are three members that are mutually agreed upon and then there is a member that's a county appoint and a member that's a city appoint. And so the three that are up for reappointments are the three mutually agreed upon, again, very qualified individuals and great members of the board, they're always knowledgeable. And so the county will also be reappointing them.
Are these the same people that were on it?
The vets, so we did previously have a different vet when we first started to left the area and Whitney agreed to settle up.
I note we approve the mutually agreed upon members Lisa Robinson, Donna Van Tassel and Whitney Potts for an additional three-year term to the health board, board's health. So moved by Fisher Buehler, seconded by Fisher Hewitt to approve the mutually agreed upon members, is there any comments from the public? Any comments from the commission? Let's do a roll call vote. We are approving three mutually agreed upon members for the Fergus County Health Board, Commissioner Buehler.
Aye.
Commissioner Day.
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Aye.
Commissioner Rube.
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson.
Aye.
Commissioner Spica.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
Okay, discussion in action on approving a codification agreement from American Legal Publishing and authorizing the city manager to sign the agreement.
So included in your package is the proposal that was provided by the current firm that we go with for our city codes. They take basically our ordinances and codify it, making it available online and in print. All of the departments have binders that are located within them that have that up to date. What is being proposed this time is a complete revamping, so reprinting of. Uh, what is being proposed this time is a complete, uh, revamping, uh, so reprinting of the binders. Typically, they just add and subtract pages, you know, give us replacement pages, uh, if there's ordinance changes or something. And, uh, and they would go through the process of reprinting all of those books, as well as a full legal review, making sure that things were consistent. Uh, language like it doesn't say the mayor or city council, but making sure it reflects what was currently going on. And then things are up to date. We do submit, uh, regularly, uh, for that, and that's where you'll see, um, the twenty-two dollar a page, um, and things like that.
So where does, did we budget this, like, where's this coming from?
Yeah, so we do budget it at the time of-
Budgeted.
Yes, it's over two years.
Oh.
So this whole process will take, um, close to eighteen months.
Cool, so if we can get them quick ordinances, we can get the regular-
So we have everything pretty much ready to go. Um, I know Doug had some concerns on zoning stuff and things like that. Um, and it, I mean, by the time the process is complete, uh, if we've got any of those, we'll make sure that they are all shipped off to them before they print the, the binder.
Yeah, I was just curious how often this is done.
Supposed to be done pretty often by MCA, but-
Every ten years.
Well, it's like every ten years. It's been a long time. Can you feel that?
Well, is that motion being?
Yeah, sure. I am move we approve a codification agreement from American Legal Publishing and authorize the city manager to sign that agreement.
Well, second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Bueller, seconded by Commissioner Day. Is there any comments from the public? Any other comments from commissioners?
This is fun stuff right here. This is the meat and potatoes right here.
Um, okay, you ready? Uh, we are approving an agreement with American Legal Publishing. Commissioner Bueller?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rube?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Spica?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Okay, discussion in action on authorizing the repair of the step screen at the wastewater plant by Huber Technologies. All right, there gives a breakdown of this one, since we just had a-
Oh, so this is one of the pieces of critical equipment. We have all of the parts. Um, it's a very technical piece of equipment. Um, and so in the past, we've had Huber come out and do the, uh, maintenance items on it. Uh, the first technician was from Germany. This guy that, uh, will be coming out, this time is from Brazil. So they are, uh, very skilled, and it's not something that there's like an order manual that tells you how to replace these parts and stuff like that. Um, and so with that being said, the estimated cost is just an estimate. Um, I would ask that you guys authorize, uh, to actually do what's necessary to get that functional. Um, and you can see the rates and stuff like that. Uh, so again, they've only estimated what's there. They only bill us for what is utilized, um, but based on the information provided by the staff, uh, that's how that, uh, estimate was formulated.
Will you be able, what, will you be able to come back to us with the actuals?
You will see the invoice.
Okay.
And I would guess, I mean, I would say less than thirty thousand would be kind of the top end, so it's fairly close.
One invoice, or will it be spread out over multiple?
No, it'll all be done at one.
Is this one of the critical pieces that?
It is on the list, and they are aware that we will, I mean, we've had parts on order for a long time and have been working to schedule this.
And has this been budgeted in our current budget?
With our budget.
Is the, what we've budgeted for, is that our, our money, or is that our money?
No, this is O-N-M, operation. Uh, so this would be in the three sixty two probably, um, with the, uh, repair, thank you.
He's coming from Brazil, which one that will be working on our project. What's the timeframe on that?
Uh, he comes for a, a week.
But, I mean, like, is he coming now, or is he?
Yeah, he's scheduled to come.
Good.
This weather implement kind of is inside.
Inside, this is in the government. Does Tia want a facility?
We are.
All right, anybody wanna?
Bet on Brazil?
I'll move that we, uh, we-
Did you even bet on Brazil?
I know, I, we authorize the repair of the step screen at the wastewater plant by Huber Technologies.
Second.
So moved by Christian Day, seconded by Commissioner Bueller. Is there any comments from the public?
Yeah, they're bad on me, love them.
Thank you. Any other comments from commissioners? Yes, Ron.
I know we have to do this, but I look on page four and it says, "The service under manufacturing, engineering services in-house includes failure analysis of returned hardware, dol- hundred and fifty dollars an hour." The, the stuff they give you, if it fails and they analyze it, you gotta pay the hundred and fifty bucks an hour to find out what went wrong with it, when it was their stuff.
If you elected to go through the process, it would be like a warranty process or something like that, is what it would be.
So that's not to get, you wouldn't guarantee that.
Nope.
Good point, though. I did not realize that the wastewater treatment plant was on the T Street.
It is.
Is there anything else on the T Street?
Um, I think the, like, new bus barn, maybe. I don't know what that, I don't think that one's on the T Street.
Interesting.
It's, it's like one of those weird blue streets.
Hmm, it's been, that's one.
Okay, any other comments from commissioners? All right, roll call votes. We're approving the repair of the step screen at the wastewater treatment plant. Commissioner Bueller?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rube?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Spica?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
All right, citizens' requests. Commissioners minute. Uh, before I start the commissioners' minute, let's just real quick discuss the DEQ, uh, just so that everybody's on the same page of, of what the meeting was, and if there's any questions on that. So, does anyone have any questions? Um, I will just, just cause Tim came in late, I will just say that the comments are on two permits. One permit is called an individual permit, and that works on the industrial side, the composty side.
Nope, none, no, that's the wastewater discharge, so the way, treated wastewater.
Treated wastewater. And then the other one is the stormwater permit. The stormwater permit with Holly's letter and stuff, they're looking at, hopefully, go further action on that, because we're working on that. The one that has been escalated to enforcement is the individual permit of, because there's actually a failed piece of equipment.
Well, multiple, but they want more information before they-
Yeah, but that's the one that has been escalated to-
Exceedance?
Exceedance.
We have multiple exceedance and multiple machine failures.
So, which two permits?
Question with Doug, the biosolids composting, is that something that the city would like to continue to do? Or is that something that we would like to, uh, review and see if that's something we would like to?
That's a service we provide to citizens?
Yes.
So that would be totally up to you guys?
Okay.
Um, if you want to continue that, otherwise, I mean, you're putting it back on the residents to figure out how to get rid of their draft and leave.
Okay.
Uh, we can figure out our biosolids, which will be at cost. I mean, we still have the end product that's coming out of the wastewater plant, um, but it's a much smaller quantity.
Is that permit that we have, uh, issues on for citizens' composting or the city's composting?
Of the- The same.
Yes, but you're saying we would still have the compost coming out of our-
No, we would still have a product.
Yeah.
Biosolids is that product.
Yeah, it's not a compost.
So we have the raw material coming out.
And they were saying that biosolids and compost were the ones in that, uh, I would say second.
So our treatment of biosolids is currently the compost.
Yeah.
So it's one and the same.
Okay, so that's great. He said that we could continue doing that onsite, or we could have that contract when we- Is that something that the city is thinking about, or we are going to continue doing that onsite?
Are we doing the ladder?
The ladder, and you guys would ultimately have to make that decision.
Are we doing all?
We're doing it all onsite right now.
Yep.
Are we not doing it correctly? Is that what they're having a problem with? Like, what's the problem with the biosolids? Is it, is they, there, there's big piles?
So with containment of the contaminant groundwater?
Yeah.
Primary, inflow and outflow of the, basically, what water gets into. It's fine to be there, it's when the water introduced to it.
And it was noticed that there is seepage down into the groundwater.
Right.
That there is a permeable barrier.
Correct, it's a leak. I mean, again, they can't prove that it's in the river.
What would an alternative be, entirely different alternative to deal with that material?
Well, you can landfill, lab, I mean, that's-
So pick it up, take it up to the airport, landfill.
Uh, that is not even the landfill. I mean, hauling it to-
Not landfill, excuse me, land farm it.
Correct, yeah.
Well, and it could, we could cease the process of, of use, doing anything with it down at the plant area and take it somewhere else in landfill.
Correct.
In which case, I just wanna understand this, it's going to seep into the ground.
Correct, yeah, there's, so there's goaded, and there's all sorts of different things, uh, application rates, things like that.
But on a cost to the taxpayers, we could truck it out of that area, not have it there. It can't get in the creek if it's all the way from the creek.
Can I make a statement?
Or we can, oh.
Remember-
I'm trying to understand, I'm not trying to talk.
I just wanna make one statement. It's not the taxpayers, it's the ratepayers. Because it would be the cycle work.
Right.
And then as a citizen, I gotta comment that, and as a employee of the city office, it would be a detriment to not be able to put our leaves and our, um, brass up and stuff. We get comments all the time of how thankful people are that that is available.
So put it somewhere, somewhere, right, but maybe not adjacent to the creek.
Yeah, I was gonna say, can't we just?
That's my, my, where I'm going there is-
Again, that's one of the options.
The great thing's primarily that people have a concern, and I get that. Can we just take it a long way from the creek and land farm it, put it somewhere else? Have a, have the drop-off spot be in a different facility somewhere else.
I think that is probably, and that was not ever really, that point was not ever gotten to in the letter. It was all violation, here's the concern, not what the end result is and stuff. So again, that's the continued conversations that need to be had. We just haven't seen it, and it's been, I mean, since July, probably, that we saw that last letter. So we responded, and maybe we did it again, but I would guess that that's some of the options that could be explored.
Okay, so let's talk about the equipment. What's the deal? Cause that's one. Yeah, on permit one, the equipment has failed for six years or whatever. Are, is that something we are looking at replacing, or is this part of this?
It's already been done.
Okay.
Um, and again, I mean, without seeing what their letter is, if they want more, or aren't satisfied with, a lot of it is incorporated, uh, you know, the scrutums is incorporated with the ARCA project that you guys just approved. Um, the ARCA project addresses a lot of this screening and things like that. Um, there are other maintenance items that get addressed all the time, so. Without looking at the list, I don't know what still is remaining.
What's the, do you know what the issue is with the exceedance? Cause I think we have a good line on the machinery, but the exceedance is also a part of that issue.
Um, to some degree, yes. Um, a lot of it's been the storm-related stuff. You know, when we see a high in like eleven million gallons for a plant that's designed to treat five, it, you're going to, not that you're not treating, but it's going to wash through the plant quicker. You don't have the detention time necessary to do, um-
Understanding that there's reasons for it, but do we have mitigation plans in place to pull our exceedance back down to an approved level?
There is no approved level.
But that's what they were saying, again, that-
Or, or, we are in violation because of that. And I mean, what they determined isn't, there isn't an appropriate level. I mean, they have a numeric standard, and if you're over that, it's an exceed.
But that's their numeric value, so we need to try to meet that.
Short of a massive new water treatment plant that can handle two to three times the current capacity, that's really the only way to guarantee we'll never exceed the only exceedance. Is that correct? That, someone asked?
Yeah, I would say, but again, can we guarantee that we're not gonna have flooding? No, I mean, there's always going to be those situations. Um, when the plant was built, which was twenty years ago, um, it was designed for twice what our flow was then. It hasn't gone up.
It's actually, it's always-
I know, but why?
Where do you differ?
Yeah, that's a question, why?
I, I understand that, but it's just, it's just fascinating to me that one of the jewels of Louis Towne is our water and our Big Spring Creek. And I feel like the expectation should be that we are working as hard as we can to reduce the exceedance as much as possible. Not just be comfortable with the fact that it's gonna flood, so you know it's just gonna happen. We should be working towards mitigating that as much as possible. And then the next question is, why do we put wastewater for the plant on our beautiful gem?
Okay, yeah, a lot.
Well, it, it has to go somewhere.
Understand.
Unless somebody's backyard, it's gotta go somewhere.
Exactly.
And we have the stomach to triple the budget right now for sewer treatment plant.
Oh, no.
Because if you want to be Mother Nature, that might flood in a big way next week, you're gonna have to triple the scale of this, the twenty-year-old treatment plant.
Well, and I wonder if there is, it is worth exploring that at least. We can sit here and we can say that.
It may be part of the process that we explore. We don't know what these letters are one of.
I'm just saying it's a monetary trade-off.
I, I would totally agree with that.
For, for a community that doesn't like its taxes raised under any circumstances, I think it's a big lift to assume that the community's gonna go along with tripling their sewer rates.
I, I think that's very, a very valid point. But I also think it's worth saying that it is a good goal to at least explore, think about, and make steps towards, instead of stopping and saying, too big, too much, can't do it. This is one of those things that-
And I don't, I don't see it, I don't see it as that. I see it as, as, as some part of the commissioners said, this is how big we think we want it to be based on the tax burden of citizens, right?
There's sewery with the citizens.
Sewers, it's a tax. Semantics, it's a tax, right, it's a tax. At what point is it too much? Is it too much? And so let's triple it. We're all gonna pay triple it?
Yep.
Three?
Yep.
Right, if that's, if that's okay.
You also heard, um, Lyndsay alluded to is, so we are a major point source, so we are regulated to the highest standard. Meanwhile, there's all this funding available to address the other outliers, which are our agriculture users and our, um, you know, all of these people that fly under the radar. Most of them are agriculture. Uh, the, uh, hattery folks are, uh, have a permit to discharge, things like that. So you have a whole lot of other contributors to kind of this holistic dream. Yep, and, I mean, again, we have a, a facility that treats it and is regulated higher than most. I mean, all of the septic system, all of, uh, the failing stuff that's out there, that is really not treated.
Yep. And a good reason to champion it, make it the best it can be.
That's why I think Lyndsay pointed that out, that they've got some funding available.
Yeah, we will wait with bated breath to see what this letter is for, hopefully no further action. But we get a letter from them on the other part?
I think you'll get letters on both. Uh, I will tell you that- Uh, I will tell you that that one, the, um, industrial biosolids, stormwater one, uh, I've been told that the letter was going to be sent out for several months, and so, uh, as soon as I get something...
Well, I think that was what they were referring to, that they had turnover and now...
Yes, I will tell you that when I met with them, uh, being under staff was an exception and not something that they were willing to, to go. We'll see when we get it, it'll be shared, I'll get them your emails as well, so you'll know as soon as I know.
Some crazy question from the beginning, what is lethal life? We keep saying it's twenty years old, but what is the life?
So the mechanical components, any mechanical equipment or something like that, the usable life is traditionally twenty years. Now, you're maintaining it, uh, we pretty regularly replace, you know, a pump here or a pump there, so, uh, it can be extended, but the usable life of this facility is twenty years. Um, I will tell you that the other thing that really wasn't addressed is our wastewater plants have not had a permit, a discharge permit. Um, I believe it was two thousand and seven, uh, they have one under the new permit. And then, due to stepping in some issues with numeric standards versus, um, nutrient standards and then a subsequent lawsuit, they have just kind of sold out in their permitting.
So, on DEQ side, not on our side?
And so right now, we're still under the same permit that we had when we built it. It's been administratively continued.
I would, the one other piece that I'd like to know, I would like to know from, obviously, Big Spring Watership folks who are very interested, we had a lot of them here. I, I'm sorry I was late, I didn't get peace with it, Mother Nature, you know? I'd like to know what their expectations and the trade-off of what they're willing to go to the taxpayers with us, arm in arm, or you wanna double, triple your tax, your rate rates. What is their expectation of? The reason I say that is because, as you heard them say tonight, sixty percent of the time that they show up, they write a tape. Okay, so citations from the DEQ are the norm, not the exception. So, to, to throw out citation, 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 if the fire chief showed up for an inspection of your building and sixty percent of the time you were written a ticket, trust me, all of us business owners would buy new fire chiefs, right? They would, they would make changes. It's the norm to write the citation. A citation does not necessarily mean the worst kind of citation. Because all I'm trying to point out is, let's be careful that we've had a citation every year for X number of years.
That was addressed.
As a business person, that's to be expected.
Well, like I said, I'll get those requests, and you'll see, I mean, it, there's not gonna be a consistent pattern. Um, I mean, they're gonna be different things every inspection, things like that, you know?
The Watership Council, they stood up and they said that they'd like to work with the city if that means help raising money or technical or just advocating for this, they'd like to help. That's what they stood up for.
And I'm with you, I, I was just looking for more definition to their expectations of exceedance. What are they expected to be? If they're concerned, what is realistic when there's a big, huge, what, what's realistic? You know, what it was, I don't wanna go into details, but there, I think we need to find realistic expectations by everybody involved.
And having everyone at the table is important to do that.
Yes.
Yeah, the comment from the DEQ. We're glad they came and on the call. That's good.
They took a lot of time explaining some things.
Don't know. Um, the other thing I want to talk about before we do Commissioners Minute, because I know that you guys had a meeting, was the school, school Lewis and Clark driving stuff. So, I don't know who wants to report on that, but...
I mean, all of us can.
Yep.
So we met, um, we had a good conversation, presented the concerns that I think the commission all shared. Um, and this school, uh, was willing to do some changes. Uh, they left and kind of backtracked on what changes they were willing to do. So they definitely heard our concern, and so then you saw, uh, the response. And again, I reached out, I made sure that, um, it was all of our takeaway that their action or inaction, um, did nothing, nothing to solve the concerns that were brought to them. Which is really safety of kids, whether it's on the bus or, um, parent drop-off at the bottom of uranium and traffic throughout that whole area, but primarily that intersection of fluoride and air pollution.
So what changes did they make?
So what was relayed, we talked a lot about different drop-off opportunities, primarily with the buses, because that's what's in...
Separating the parent, the parent drop-off and the buses was kind of our hope.
Separating, meaning not all on one street.
Yep. What ultimately happened, um, was the buses were dropping off closer to uranium, and this only started today. So we met last week, we had a couple days to implement, and Danny realized that today was the first day that things were going to change. Um, and the change is just moving the buses from drop-off next to uranium, which is right next to the airport road, further back by Crystal. And it's only been one day.
And, I mean, one day it would be bad traffic, the next day it wasn't so bad. So, again, it'll take a little time to evaluate it, but it did nothing to separate buses and the parent drop-off.
Yeah.
So, school drop-off for Lewis and Clark in the morning is one hundred percent on fluoride, everything happening there.
So the only thing that changed was where the buses dropped off?
Yes.
The, the only thing changed is they went like this.
Yep.
One went from the other, and just, they looked off space.
Then I'll tell you, this morning it was a disaster because it really wasn't communicated well. And so there was kids from other schools that were standing in line where they'd always been picked up on the buses. And so you had buses stop here and then pull in down there anyway.
Oh, no. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I think it's gonna take cooperation between the school district and the city. My biggest concern is my discovery through this process, that the school district personnel are dictating and deciding traffic flows, parking, signage, all of those things that we just spent a whole lot of time talking about on, over a third, for a few parking spots, and they're dictating the entire traffic flow and safety concerns around an entire neighborhood. And I have real concerns that a third party, not the city, is dictating what's happening around there. And that it should have been, probably, the school comes to the city and says, we're gonna change things and here's why, well, we're not gonna change things, and here's, here's why we like it differently. I think the city needs to take control of the parking and the traffic flow for the, for the neighborhoods around it and the safety of the citizens and the children. You know, I don't think that there's a, I don't think the school district is qualified to make that decision. Right? That will stir the pot, but I don't think they're qualified to make the decision.
I was, um, the last couple days, I was, I was notified, and it kind of pushed them off to you guys, but by two different school board members. And they were just kind of wondering what was going on, and I told them the situation. So I'm hoping, and, and they were gonna push it further too, so I'm hoping that it, it at least gets escalated to the school board. So that, you know...
Well, you guys could instruct me to, I mean, we have sent letters to all of us that were at the meeting, which is super intended, was also unintended. Um, but we could copy the school board on that conversation, and that, basically, we said, we're still concerned that these concerns have not been addressed.
Yeah.
People equally concerned, sorry, wrong, we just clarified, that many millions of dollars have been spent on new school facilities with inadequate bus lanes and parking considered for that school. Increase the population and increase the use of people with a new gymnasium without adequate parking.
Or even a plan.
Which creates a real hassle for the neighborhood and for the streets around it, and I think potentially a dangerous situation. And, and I don't see where, I think it was just missed, and I think it wasn't really considered, and that's too bad, and we can try to work with them to try to fix it, but it's gonna take, um, maybe a traffic engineer rather than a school employee. So I thought our intent, our hope was for how the buses load and unload on what they call lower airport road on the other side, right?
But that was rejected by a school.
They rejected that.
They did not like that, no.
Not, not sure how they can reject it, if they did reject it. Okay. Okay, so we make the other road a one-way.
I said that too.
There was a lot of things proposed.
That wasn't thrown out when we argued, is that, well, we can enforce the issue and we can change some things. We, I don't think we want to get there, I think what we want to do is find a block.
Like they say, we don't want to do this.
Yeah, yeah, I think we find a block of the...
Yeah, I think the school board, I mean, needs to be involved.
Yeah, that's who you talk to, right, school board?
Talk to the superintendent.
I, I drove by, and, and I think if you were to take a field truck and drive around the school right now, you would see that there's ample opportunity to repurpose some of the ground, especially in the northeast corner of the property that is right now black dirt, nothing but black dirt. And you could get a much safer situation for buses, and you could have parking for the people that are gonna use that gymnasium.
Decrete traffic.
There's no budget for it, I understand, there's no money in the budget for it right now. Um, but that's gonna be, those are gonna be empty words and an empty concern if somebody gets hurt on fluoride. And, and I'm really concerned every time it smells, having lived at the top of that hill on uranium, that having slid all the way down that road, very conservative approach, trying to hit down that street and not know until it's too late, that you're gonna slide right through the intersection and right up against the fence. And I've done it, my wife's done it multiple times, I know my children have done it. If I've done it, that means that all the other residents up there have probably experienced the same very dangerous situation. I just don't think there should be anybody at the end of that street, and, and right now it's kids, and it's kid, parents dropping off. In fact, I'm guessing it's gonna be way more confusing with a whole bunch of parents dropping to a position right in a stopping zone, so.
Well, I, I gotta call also Earth Base something, and I might have said this in the last meeting,
but, um, from somebody who lives there, doesn't have children, just wants to get to work and can't. So they, they started to get, they're starting to go to work at eight-thirty in the morning, and they worked with their employer, I think, I believe she worked, works in hospital. And it was just like, I can't even get there.
I think if we had a private developer that had that block and said, I'm gonna increase my use by twenty-five percent, it would be sick, and, and suddenly jammed it all up with cars, we'd have an emergency city commission meeting and fix it tomorrow. Be damned public dollars, we'd fix it tomorrow. I just think the fact that it's a school, obviously, we all have a concern on the safety of the kids primarily. We need, we just need to make it a hot topic, it needs to go on the agenda next time.
Yeah.
What's the solution? And can we make a motion to change something that they have mentioned?
When was the school board meeting?
That's what the meetings are.
It was the second Monday of every month.
Second?
Second, Sunday of every month.
Thanks, guys.
How long is it now that you're meeting?
Okay, okay, so they don't have a meeting until next December?
So we surrender night, at six p.m., we can go to the next meeting for school board.
Now, Mr. Commissioners, do you have anything more to say?
Those are all the minutes.
Tricia, Speaker, do you have a minute?
Sorry, my phone was not responding. Um, I do not have a minute. It's been a, it's been a good meeting.
Hey, you have a minute? Ron, do you have a minute?
In regards to the airport, um, I have also noticed large, uh, private jets coming in and out of there. Um, I sense that large private jets are related to money. And maybe that's money for our community. And I was wondering if there's a possibility that our airport facility was a consideration in Viacom's decision to be here. I sense maybe it was. In regard to all that, I'm, uh, I guess I knew that they were not the recipient of any tax dollars, but I think maybe we should look into that. That's my minute.
Thank you, Ron. Good one. Okay, thank you, Ron. No minute, no minute for you.
So do not forget.
Oh, Happy Thanksgiving.
Oh, thank you.
Enjoy your, hopefully, time with your family.
Is there anything else for the governor? If he's got anything?
At least, at least your arms aren't crossed anymore.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Tricia, you guys, good job, that was...